Morning.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
I am grateful, Father, and God for thinking this and should set aside that we, as ladies, we can come together and discuss those things which are most important for our citizens. We're thankful, Father, for the help and the mindset that it may want us to be. We're thankful, Father, as you look at us, every good and perfect gift that we receive. Be with us this morning, be with those who have chosen to protect us in service, people who said, this is our prayer, going in.
All right, with that, meeting has been called to order and you all have a copy of the last meeting, so I will open up, entertain a motion for approval of the... Okay, motion's meeting has been called to order, without entertaining motion to approve the meeting minutes on last month's meeting. Motion from President, second from Congress, all is in favor, please raise your hand. Do you have a couple minutes before we'll have the Gibson Township hearing and approval, and that will start at nine oh five? Michelle, there you go, skip two, salary, okay, all right, we will go to the salary ordinance, salary ordinance amendments? All right, can you take those as one blanket one, or do we need to do individual ones? Okay, with that, you should have the salary ordinance amendments, and that is for sheriffs, deputy, coroners, EMS on call rates, so with that, I will open the floor for a motion to approve the salary ordinance. Motion from Ryan Dale, second, second from Congress, all is in favor, please raise your hand. Motion, here.
Michelle, what was the salary ordinance on the sheriff's department, what was that in regards to?
Sir. Yes, they're starting salary, increasing every single time pay increases are forgiven, there's a certain serving amount of...
So a new order, a new priority?
Yes. Michelle, motion, here, I didn't ask for names, anybody that was in opposition, but just going to make sure that, yeah, counsel, people, those.
That's right, you opposed the salary ordinance of all the amendments, or?
All of them. Okay, it's now nine oh five, so we can open the hearing for Gibson Township. Is there anyone here who's on behalf of Gibson Township? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the budget for the... With that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, I'm saying... With that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Gibson Township. Motion on the floor for Ryan Dale, second from President, all is in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel, one and four, my, and say, all right, with that, it is closed for Gibson Township. Michelle, do you want to make a formal adoption of it? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion for the formal adoption of the Gibson Township budget, so with that, I will... Motion from President, second from Congress, all is in favor, please raise your hand. Michelle, are we open to move on to salary ordinance? All right, with that, I'll open the floor for discussion on any changes to the budget as reviewed.
I saw my name on the side.
To start with, are, we have put this type in from the judges at the last meeting for the budget, we put that back in due to the state constitution that you guys made us aware of, do you have any other things on that, or we'll just keep it as it was? Any other comments or discussion about the budget, desire, anything from last month's meeting? Okay, all right, so with hearing of discussion about the budget, I will entertain a motion, you all should have the salary ordinance review for a little while, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of salary ordinance for 2024. Okay, motion from Ryan Dale for the approval of the salary ordinance for 2024, second from Gerald, all is in favor, please raise your hand. All of those, all three curves. Michelle, the 2024 salary ordinance was set up. John, do you have any comment?
I wasn't. No, I don't agree on that stuff.
The council, will the council like recess until nine thirty, or will you go to the hearing? Michelle, do you have anything else we can cover, I'm still in? We've got a report for that. And I should care, the source for the work salary, to the whole... All right, with that, and recess until nine thirty. Okay, how much you want with that?
Probably, yeah. Every time of the year, year is out of the woods, there slash everything. They were above it, above the earth. And we heard it was a tavern, this, in the morning, even some church point, with Stephen. That has happened, yes. Yep. Just some area where there's a little footballs there, and yes, there's... There's season here.
Hello, dear.
I was experiencing one, there was one by, recent merger. I don't know, I was there, but, hey, not to school, I don't, for a day, you know, shit, or whatever. Brad, great, was a lot, I don't know, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's comparative, that, that, they were no good, but he started, I don't know.
So you said...
This, all right, I'm glad, yeah, yeah, I know, actually, the day that, they turned whatever, and it just all, you know, you know, and then... Yeah, process, I put it, everything, it was random, all of them, part of that. First, this, I'm three down, I think, yeah, we got, we got this, we put the girl first, we had seven, but twenty-two thousand dollars, yeah. There's the highest ones, yeah. He works, yeah, so, yeah, and we'd be, and they said that somebody did give it, yeah, because, and we, you know, I don't, for me, but, yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I haven't, you know, in parts, one, one of the years, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, exactly. Well, when I go, we, very little, it was that, we, we, but, my, both, I don't know, the, it's, we were there, thirty miles, this, I will probably, always last, several, thirty months, I guess. I just, yeah. It's often ways that, you know, you know, because, so we bought, for six million dollars, I used to know the name, for Russian, getting in the bay, about thirty, three cents, three cents, yeah, it was like, remember that, in the, I used to know the dining for the days and stuff like that, that was a very aggressive purchase, I think, forty, I was in, very soon. So we wanted, working thirty, we decided to, that's the purchase. Get on your ass, and have them out, and say, uh... That says, Joe, you don't know what you're doing. And, yeah, basically, I, every week, it says, Joe, perfect, whatever. Just like you did for the G, that's the thing about a G, G, that's just, it's the everyone, yeah, so you're, put a lot of money into it, or, well, we don't really, we need money.
Your G?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yes, that'd be, so... What would you say? All right, yeah. That's not you, I think it's already...
No, mine's, mine's still recording, I don't turn it off, it's, it's the, you guys have turned off your video. Right, she's got a pause, and it, it blanks, yeah.
We're not recording.
You guys are not recording, but I, I can't really turn it off, because it's a live stream, once I turn it off, it finishes, yeah, it finishes. But I'll put in the notes that this is the recess, and if people want to listen to how much we spent on Alaska in eighteen sixty, they can... Yeah, no, I'm not even gonna, I'm not gonna make you do anything. I'm just sitting back here cooling out, had a rough weekend.
All that philosophy, it's all me, you got buying words. Well, with money, it's all their, their office, every, if they want to say it, you hear, like, you know, I, 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 every year, I, I, I have, every year, I even, it's like, uh, turn me, like, uh, but, 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 every year, my, my guy had that, every year, you're saying, well, why don't you, I said, let's see who we can, we gotta see what, he got, if I had to catch all the money, if I had, you better have the best thing on earth, than we, you know, I think it's going wrong, Sam.
Oh, Becky, we're gonna have another candidate forum on October fourteenth at H&R Bakery at one o'clock, I haven't made any advertising for it yet, uh, fourteen, H&R Bakery, at one P M, there will be donuts and coffee, because that's gonna be, you know, one of those things, and it'll be downstairs, so, we'll let the candidates do a, I'm pretty speech beforehand, and then I think we're gonna do just a round table. Yeah, 'cause I don't believe, most of the Republicans will show up, imagine that, but, but, the Democrats are really frisky, and my people are really frisky, but it'll be livestreamed too, but you're more than welcome to come down, yeah, even the last one, you more than welcome, and actually Renee Mather brought coffee and donuts, yeah, I was like, I just gotta do it, don't make me, she's like, we gotta have donuts, I know, it took, it took so much for me to get the school gym, or the school presentation room, I'm like, you know, but I'll have donuts there because it's H&R Bakery, I can just hand them money, and they'll do stuff. And they'll do stuff.
I failed that. All play. The silence. I'm spoiled the whole time. I I I don't. I suppose somebody. Cuz I. Spoiled. Soon as I. I go back. Change. Especially when you're pretty. Hello, please.
Well, do you understand?
Yeah. Turn it off. So you make the. From. So.
Yeah.
I. I'm ready. We're supposed to. I just. Now be. Be perfect. Well, I'm somebody. Yeah. Yes.
Alright, it is now nine thirty. We'll recompete. Back to order. Alright, we do have budget adoption. Uh, Michelle looking for a base public carries have already been. Get some reasons. Okay. Okay, so we have several budgets to adopt. We're gonna go through. Michelle, do I need to read the resolution numbers? Okay. Uh, motion to adopt the Blue River Fire District twenty twenty four budget. Motion to adopt. Okay, so alright, I have a motion from Ron Dale, the second from Preston. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. The next one would be from Brown Burn Fire District twenty twenty four budget. So now I have a motion for approval. Uh, motion on the floor from Ron Dale, do I have a second? Second from Joe, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Alright, next is for the adoption of these lady free conservancy twenty twenty fourth budget with. Change book and. Motion from Gerald, do I have a second? Second from Preston, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Next is for the adoption of solid waste initiative twenty one four budget without a nineteen ways. Production. Okay, friends. Motion from Gerald, the second from Joe, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Alright. Last one is the. Budget for the county, so motion for the draft of the Mars Inc. twenty twenty four budget. All those in favor, uh, we'll actually. Uh, motion for adoption. Motion from Ron Dale, do I have a second? Second from Preston, any further discussion? Okay. All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay. All those opposed? Motion carries. Shall we wait to make another copy on the. Alright, so it's coming around for you to um, have your signature on them. Are there any discussion, any comments, any concerns or updates that the council would like to provide? A little sort of. Joe. Yep.
What?
Okay. Brown.
I reached out. Thanks. If you're just a little bit, I have. Tell other things. Future.
Okay. Karen. Preston.
Yep.
We've talked about this the last several meetings about ready two point O. I'll just give a little bit of a. I don't have a list of every project that was submitted from our county, but I have a pretty good understanding of. About. What type of projects were submitted. Uh, so. You all know that we are part of the Regional Development Authority called. And we do have representation on that board. Our appointment this time is John Jones. And so the five number four, they are applying for a second round of money from the state. Ready two point O where the region here my state between fifty and seventy five million dollars. And last time we did receive the full amount of fifty million. As we recall, Washington County receives about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's the fifty million that was due to the region. Which we were very. Unabused by. So with that, um, the county has done very intentional. Not just kind of government, they just, you know, I don't know, partnership. The local municipalities, the water companies, the foundation, the YMCA. A lot of people have been very intentional about those projects and submitting them for consideration. So last Wednesday, there was the deadline for it was a call for projects where. Basically, it's a placeholder, so if you had a project that you wanted to be considered for funding. The five counties had opportunities to submit projects. I know of um, two large farm projects. Uh, the rural areas, the over unserved areas. Um, there's a couple housing projects that have been proposed. I wanna say there's also, uh, you know, an expansion for the YMCA. There's also some other improvements. And I know the city has several projects they were submitting as well. So I think we have a lot better representation and a lot more diverse of projects submitted this time. And uh, there's a lot of coordination going on. I was working in partnership with the economic partnership to send. That to them so that they do have a law. So if you have a question about all of the projects that were submitted, you can reach out to. They were keeping track of all of those. So at this time, it's really a placeholder and then there will be a call for applications. And they'll it'll take a more formal application process. And then from there, they'll prioritize which projects. Are important to the REA and they will create investment strategy and ultimately to get an act on its own corporation. So. Any questions? Oh, yeah, we will definitely. We will definitely. Now you can also get that information about ready one point O. You know, the first round. To see where it all went. Good projects, um, but I think there's an, there is some intention. Behind the REA board to make sure that there is. More representation from Washington and. Both counties. Yeah, it's a completely open. Public process, you can always get all of the information, public.
Yeah, these. Did I see something? Like a risk. Or this issue that. Can't. I think some of them, once you was in here. Five hundred. So. There was something, can't they say? Opted it out of that program so that extra money was. Put back into that program. Appreciate. Yeah. Money issue with funding.
I don't know anything about that. Michelle, could you send a note to Maggie asking her what the final allocation amount will be for the county? Yeah, you're right. Some counties that participate. The rest of it would be divided.
Increase the.
Yes. Seeing no further discussion, we do have the air coming in at one o'clock. And um. We will reset until then.
And versions get very. They move.
Yes, I.
What was that? Feel. I think. Think it's. A lot of. See that. The. Careful. I sound. Going to. Visit. So that's what I'm saying. If there's. Some. In the. Um. Yeah.
Um. I would be welcome to see.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, he was free with it quickly or something. Yeah. But it's. I don't respond to any of those. Hope.
Well, this is. You know, as a person from the county, not from the county.
Yeah. That's where I'm not really sad. But.
Take care. It's.
Yeah. Well. Please. Yeah. What do you. That, you know, getting the forties is. Is the same. It's very. Heard that.
I'm gonna come up here and look at it if I could.
I'm. Nine or ten years, guys.
There it is.
Very frustrating. Uh, okay. Well, we see.
Okay.
Well, I mean. I'm innocent because I, you know, it sounds like this, you know, uh. Whatever. Um, just like openly enough, there's no attachment right from one that you're together. Get my rest. Um. Feel like. Like. What I thought was that no point in here that they talk about. He doesn't. Yes, but no way. Well, okay, so what you need to do, um, because, you know, people are sending emails and things like that. Uh, because they're they're watching. You know who I am. You know, just like me, I'm married. You know, I even went to college that way. Okay. It's a, it's a weird story. And I I'm like, don't you know who I am? I'm so glad I was being young because I'm sorry and it was really sexy back then. And and I'm like, don't you even know? Don't you even know? I'm not a person. I'm not a person. I'm married, oh, Brenda. And I'm like. I mean, what do you. Be so ironic? You guys don't like it. Yeah, I know. Yeah, yeah. That's a little better. Yeah, I mean, it was. Yeah, I'm like, and it just, but it had it. I had to be the family to know that I was. Special. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but but what I need to know is. Yeah, but, but what I need to know is we need to have, nothing's still having an email out there. We need to have like a form of them. And that keeps the, that keeps the virus out. And mandatory, uh, wanting to put their address in. And if they're not watching, then you know they're not watching. Does that make sense? And I'm sure, you know, some of the, the all sorts of student libraries. See if I'm wrong. Wrong, wrong.
Yeah, something like that, you responded, I mean, she had that.
Well, um.
That's why I'm there. So, so, well, you should never want to, you know, like that regardless of how to speak over to the county attorney or commissioner, and I did that, so they're, 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 they're. She pays, basically, I've got all part freedom or eight fifty. That's just a, um, part of laughing one, it's a, you don't want to ask you about that. But super man. Like, I think, I think all the, first word, hey, go, bro. Oh, hello, he goes, uh, I just said, you know. And started getting this big conversation, you know, kind of because you're front. Yeah, and then he said that, so what do you get? A decision, oh, this is, oh, you know, this young partner, no, that's, that's, you know. You end up finishing up, oh, plus, well, what's your favorite? That's, he goes, watch my CD, go, forever. I said, a little bit of, and I mean, really? No, I'll see, so what's your favorite? That's what I said, they, on the. Yeah, it's a, you know, saying, I don't want to interview the person twice, you know, it's my, 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 weird.
I really need to change the way I talk to people on the phone now. Now that you show.
Now that you show them, they're using a different.
Are you talking and slugging?
No, 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 I'm trying to take the F talk, but yeah.
Oh, they, they're just going to, they're just going to tell you something. Well, pretty. They're going to figure out, okay, you like folks, you like folks. I'm saying, yeah.
Right, exactly.
So anyway, I would tell me, folks, my baby, he probably still want it. Yeah, you know, I got tickets, yeah, you know, I heard everybody's got tickets.
I wouldn't ask you to come in.
I hear that. Ron, I've got tickets for you. Do you mind wearing gloves? I think it's a good thing.
I know you did. Oh, really?
Yeah, we bet. Well, Indiana is one of the states that you can scout people.
Yeah.
I guess you can sell stuff.
Well, I mean, it's on your account.
Yeah, I was, I'm pretty sure that they can scout people, yeah. There's a lot of states you keep in there.
Watch, or it's kind of scary.
Did you see where they wanted to? That's, yeah. Yeah, you got a quarter. Russia's beating, it should be hit down. Yeah, it was a, up, 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 very well, that's well. Yeah, dude, that, this is why we do that. We should have to do that for a living, yeah.
Right, something to be affected by. All I said was that, that's hard, I mean, that would be, I mean, that's, then you get attacked. Because I'm, I'm a little bit of that.
I figure, when the dollar goes down, how much that, I'm back, actually, that's, that's, it's probably not five or six. Oh, recently, back to the past.
Well, that's how government faces it so that you can't have control of it as a citizen. So you have all these lighters, well, the effects appear, and the meat table, and around the wall, and all that other stuff. And that's why you're so medicated. Because you can't, you know, people can rather to one, you know, protect us here. Well, don't touch it anymore than you, than. What's the word?
Your body knows. So. Henderson, but it. Not one of those.
So I know.
It is.
There's a way.
Whatever. It's a nice rivers.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, I am. Well, we're in racist.
You know what's important? And, uh.
Well.
I was scared. People, you do. I, we're also, that's why you have to give the numbers. My phone has it, you know, almost all of my data, I don't know, it's all from house.
Yeah, this is all. We lost some.
Is that the public one, David?
Well, probably.
I don't know, I'm a public person. Is that, there's not all of that, oh, yeah, check, check.
Well, that's. Well, it's spread.
Oh, okay. Did you get a hold of them?
I, I was such a, yes.
Okay, okay, good. I, next.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, when you get back, all right. When you get back, I'll, wait, go. And say, I have some buskin for you. Feel, we're long, have some buskin. And then. There'll be some, very.
More game.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm also.
I'm glad I'm engaged.
Yeah, I'm gonna, wow. The previous last mission to the combination, I was worried, um, hopefully, and so today, about third, third. I was in a car accident in ninety-five, it was a common test, um, and I was going to the next, we're getting this replacement. I've heard that word when lowered this fusion. But then a couple of people lying on the lady, and that, my wife's fifteen years, uh, uh. Thanks for graduation, we're totally, yeah, and one of the classes, uh, white, that's, uh.
Five.
Nine, that's, uh, that's, uh, excellent, uh, work. Uh, sort of, that's what I actually, and it's, I said, I'm, it's, there, and, oh, it's.
Yeah, so the older you get, the older you get, oh, sorry. Your mom passed away. I forgot, sorry, one minute, I should do that, left a lot.
I don't like those.
Sorry. We're not waiting.
Yeah, I was successful, still have, I'm, excited, uh, I told her we're done, okay?
Yeah.
That's, that's, I'm scoring three.
Yeah, cool. Oh, it's good, there.
I can't even walk, but I like that one, the issue, it's like a half mile, she doesn't, three miles, walk. I don't know. Yeah. Starting with the accident. Four to half mile out. But I'm not even, uh, rise. With.
Bring this talk coming back.
Yeah.
Uh, we will resume the meeting. Darren, thanks for joining us. Before yours.
Oh, and it's. It's.
Todd will be coming in soon.
Um. Well, a bit right, I believe, I, uh, I sent an email from Harris County. Uh, here from the heart of the Fort Worth. It's all of their castle, uh, liberating their, but we did, you know, we did an example. Uh, I eliminated power banks, replacing. Bills. And, uh, they were, um, six point eight, point seven five, one day, where you're only at half. And, uh, they can all say, and learn the same thing, that they're encouraging not to do credit bills. Because now you create more pockets, uh, ways to take them though. And of course, then the, uh, uh, newspapers complaining that, you know, uh, whole more staff. You know, uh, predators, the higher home. And yet they finally did the article, what it did, the research, and found out that a lot of the best growing counties. Of any birds. That have high property tax. So they, you know, that's, it's not a fact, as I emailed back. Have thirty seven counties now that state it. Um, and I said, what's interesting is there's no one solution. Everyone looks already, you know, the. Grassroots and do that county the best. And I said, what's interesting is what they call the Indian app of film, all the cuts around Indiana. Indiana is the ninth area, it's all capped out. One, ten, two percent, three percent, doesn't matter. Uh, and they're not that they had income tax, they applied it. So they always compared to the counties around it. And so what's interesting, kind of around it, had a one percent, eleven hundred, one point seven percent. Eight of that. But yeah, they're all paying now because they're all leaving Indianapolis, the boots, the other counties around it. Because they want shopping. Now, one exception to that was Morgan. Uh, um, it's easy to understand how it's decided and it could run it more. Get that. But so it's all, you know, come in. I said, uh, gee, you have a high income tax. I know that was just a little bit, I knew what they moved back over to. One of the other counties, so. Uh, and on top of that, on a property tax, uh, assessment. Ancient daddy, leaving the United States, comes here and build, 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 build it. I'll definitely let it stop. Stop, we did it, can't find it, they're not, they're not. Don't throw away your money, so we, uh, spoke world. Where, uh, Higgins County, the whole town, they have shopping. I said, well, that's, that's even is if not our accident, credit bill, doesn't matter if you had. Student. Shopping, but it's, uh, clothes shopping. You know, and some of them go, you know, fifteen, fifteen minutes away, and now we're like, well, we have to. Indiana for point, it's. So this is a one piece solution in life for anyone. Uh, by encouraging them to be. Uh, but when you back there, it's one need to pay this thing, you know, then gotta increase, but no shop. Like, uh, something that you've done in a quarter and a half, four, five percent. Uh. Now, the next year, uh, is definitely, this month, my. If they face today, is your, uh, best. And race, so when you make decisions, you have to go back to the right. Yeah. So no, you still have the rest of this month. Uh, but again, you, you can't, you have that time, you bet it on the facts and you do it, but. Fathers can't do it for next year, but they didn't, uh, create, if you have a problem or a fire department. But it's long, either district or regional, uh, and later the same way, building down our fire departments. They now have a little tax for that. Uh, and it's, oh, you know, they come here, you know, when it started out, obviously, uh, city and, uh, public safety. Uh, was not the only two things you could do back then, and now you got, uh, the heat stuff, and profit heat stuff. You got, uh, the air service and how you got, uh, fire department. Uh, what is this week, so again, you see that they keep making ways to, and your bills. Creating a pass as we said, if you're a parent. Then you're actually paying for the bills, but even that's, uh, they are showing that it's back on the rise again. Work and, uh, growing up, you know, plus living's going up, and the income is going up, therefore, you can generate revenue that way. Cool. Uh, and the best things are is when they give you, they run up like heat sap for you nine one one. Uh, did the guys put up with all the cities and having and telling you, they're running a shop. House first, and then what's at the left, then it's left again. The thing with fire departments is they're the same one. Uh, and EMA, the ambulance service was, uh, the public safety, that they made separate parts, so not part of the public safety that. Excluded. So again, they keep on making ways to. Party thing that are important to you.
Excuse me, there's a couple of, can you back up and explain what you just said, uh, separate from. Public safety, that.
EMA is actually a line, uh, that's a different path for ambulance service. Isn't a lot of us say, well, isn't that part of public safety? And so yeah, the legislature said that, you know, you can think of it as a tax. A ready, and it's not part of one state, uh, that was one of the. As President of Endor said, he said one of his statements, he thinks, I want one, it's all little fun. Don't incorporate it, and they didn't pay for frustrating to the families, keeps quite healthy. Uh, so they wanted to implement that one. That's the. He's at, and that is point two. Those people can put down the point two, well, for her, public safety was point two. So it's, oh, oh, you go away from public safety, you want all the heat sap. They said, no, we want point two, but again, add it in there, well, that's how your form said. So it's just now that you were forty-five days later, denied, uh, gets all off. That's why, uh, when they, uh, EMA, the air service, they do not, not part of the twenty thousand of it. It's a public by itself, and whatever, where you want to put on it. You don't have to incorporate that to public safety, but it's part of the, they officially don't have two point five percent. Uh, even that, I'm a kind of. If the what, what is being short changed, it's implemented a. Ambulance test, and where's it coming from? Because it's just a shell game, right? Okay, uh, for my experience, and once I, I've been saying, um, that's what they were paying for. Uh, general fund, uh, somebody, uh, on top of, um, foundation they had. Uh, when someone died, he was playing the foundation, uh, originally, without the end of it. But they, I thought, and they should, uh, invest in that, and how they depend on the principal. So it's the less, uh, it's a new property that. Uh, that in their case, they were talking, it's cash now, uh, instead of, hey, you got a frozen letter, they weren't cash. Because there's a break in one down here, uh, three years ago, they thawed the rain, now the rain's coming back up. Now, um, they're experiencing, they're, they're presenting. And they were holding, they simply would get, you know, this much money, but that would not be part of that income tax. But now we're sure because they didn't explain, again, they weren't using cash. Wasn't, obviously, that was, uh, all out of dollars, you see. So this is for, these are for cash money. That's twenty to fifteen years. So they said, okay, well, why don't we make a link on that? A fact, here's enough money, right, if they sign one. On one table, they can have. Then it doesn't buy a, it is, you're getting back really now. So thanks, and it freed up to the general fund, uh, if you try to, if you keep the progress. This is a problem with, uh, the building idea. I lost track of time, when, when we were working this building, don't come up with. So they're, they're three, uh, three forty, forty.
Yeah, three forty, probably.
Uh, and they, uh, looking at now, and they go, some of mine, look, you give the ambulance or some of that, you seed money. Uh, to that, uh, fix the bill. So if they can, it's basically a shell game, but you gotta figure out how to, uh, any. Stop. You know, move it over here or there, and when it's done, then what, what else can we repair? Um.
So I guess one way to phrase your question, Todd, is it new revenue, or is it only for affecting other revenues? Uh, I mean, that's.
Well, uh, as a fact of taste, it was, uh, intended to new revenue. You know, one way in that they didn't have a forty percent, you know, in this tax laws, which they were hitting fast, they were just getting. Little bill to homeowners, who they had to divide homeowner's credit. Uh, and so, well, you know, the thing I'm happy is, uh, next year, the, uh, said it does, one forty-five, forty-eight, because it's doing more, you know, half a step. And what? Anytime there's a session, they come in and some of them, I think, went thirty-five, forty percent, so all homeowners next year are going to get five percent. Uh, this money has, uh, when you get five percent, uh, dozens now, uh, next year. To have, you have, they, they need to keep the homeowners additionally free. Uh, I said, so you're fully, but they're really figuring dozens to do, they're bills not obtained, but now you have a way of, uh, paying for it, you save through income tax. But you change the rate, you lower the, uh, point two on your credit, but then you came over here, so that's the income tax that you change. But it is the revenue point that you save in the round. To me, that was four, five, six, you know, we shared, her credit, uh, is P S A. And, uh, was that the only that she meant at half seven? No, it could be, that could have been part of the public safety, and he said, uh, Jared, I think the name was some Jared.
Yeah.
Four three. Okay. Uh, I tell the. Uh, I just say, you know, I put it, it's built in a moment, because now you're paying to go with, uh, that month, those five years. Uh, what's your first rate, too? Yeah. Your, well, the, uh, now average two point five. Uh, what's funny, if you have a three point five rate, but yet only two point five of that can be used to pay bills, and one percent. Is either frozen lessons on the town, you got to, you know, the follow, they can't get rid of it, because they don't have the proof of it. Or it's, uh, some towns have a one percent credit, uh, tax bills. So the pay bill is two point five, but the income tax rate is three point five, so, uh. So a lot of the towns, what they do is they're eliminating credit. To get the rate from three point two down to three, down to two point nine, class becomes one of those, you know, three point one, four, one eight rate. Not, or not, it's. Uh. So the reason why two point five is because people are lowering and giving away, keeping the credit, they heard, and one of the dog having some taxes. Like, like, kind of, we used to have an income tax, now they do. So now you got the ones that have zero, so they drop out, basically, and then throw it bottom by the top by the average, like, five. Uh, and enter two, so you're really good at that point. But the bottom line is time goes on, you're going to press it into, you know, keep up with all bills you have. Being a two point five, which then again, is a limited state, allows you to generate. And that way, the best ones are, that, that encompasses city, county, county government. Because schools don't benefit, uh, from lives, uh, their grandfather did in some county, uh, for the first quarter percent, and. Three decades ago, committed now. Uh, and, uh, counties, a lot of counties, uh, uh. Fourth to half their houses haven't had rates the last two years, because they filled up their general fund so much. Uh, so they, they really had a little bit of a similar rate. So I think that is, uh, uh, minors. And, but again, when you do it, shares are, uh. Yes, pretty much shares, then the township, regardless, they filled up their coffers even more, even though they didn't need it. So the best thing is to look at and target it, what, like I said, the new one for family departments, EMA. The, uh, of the, their, their, he's, he's fully funded, and he needs to be, that public safety. Uh, that's what's for public safety, because you're still in the kind of, the general fund. Because you got the court system, the professional services, so that is never any right. Uh, you just gotta try to do your best there, uh, seed it money, because, uh, it's about, uh, twelve years ago. They took out all the restrictions, they seeded anything that helps the village. Uh, and the type of use of that is, uh, some counties based on their budget, uh, population. Uh, but we definitely, I think we've done that here also, so seed is still the best avenue to still fund this thing. Uh, either, the county's looked at it as being a city, having something in the fire department, um, at the time, because of me. That's taken, two months ago, when you had your conference, last night, they threw that in there. But one day, we got started in, uh, in, uh, April. Uh, they did a, uh, proposal, an increase in the seed money, and the county, uh, uh, commissioned, and, uh, put aside so much money through, uh, inter. Agency of agreements, uh, to help fund one private department that was being helped. Uh, so there are ways of doing inter-agency agreements, uh, to help different, uh, even libraries, and libraries, uh, in other counties that I suppose. It does, the seed money can be used for, by anything, a lot of it is, is in the agreements. But it's due a certain restriction or condition on, well, you gotta do this to go get the money. Or it's only for, up to this amount of money, or so much time, so you just got something that locks the pipeline to do funding point. Uh. That's about all I can tell on that. So clarification, so currently, we're taking. Those between last year and this year, three quarters of a million dollar, rather, dollars of the general fund to. Prophylactic ambulance service. Oh, now, go in there, uh, this is why, uh, before, but you haven't paid a hundred percent of it, uh, and they took that trick off. I don't know what the restrictions are now, but in time, uh, somehow, the longer, the longer, and then you set the course, and nothing, uh, uh, but. So this EMS packs, which is a lift pack. If it was implemented. How bad would it hurt us? I guess what you could say is, how bad would it hurt taxpayers? Because really, we're just, like, thinking this out of the general fund, the taxpayers are, are being hurt, they just go, no. So when you go and enforce that, that new tax, that's one of, uh, my fellow former councilmen said one time. I hate taxes, nobody likes that, I don't like taxes at all, nobody wants to pay more taxes, don't want to raise that. But there's a ton of it, especially now, you know, fuel prices the way they are, people, people struggling, um. Everything you go to buy is just going crazy, crazy, sometimes double, triple, it's unlike anything I've ever seen. It's very frustrating, so if we come and we openly play the state that we're going to raise taxes in this county to support the ambulance service, then I don't want to do that. But it's almost a point of desperation, because you gotta add an ambulance service. And the problem is, it's like the last, uh, for fourteen counties I've done over the four month. Uh, you're getting down to the point that everything you're funding, it hasn't worked. Then so, then people try to start up services, how do we fund, if I really have it, then they buy a suit, they're a member. Yeah. That's the problem. And it's so frustrating when the state passes laws and say, oh, well, you can do this, you can do this, you can do this, we're gonna allow you to help yourself. Well, all that equates to is, oh, so in other words, we're gonna be paying guys, we're gonna tell our local people, we can do this, and it's gonna raise your taxes. Yes, uh, if you're like, uh, fifty-four years ago, you got plenty of, uh, president's bill, or they're finding the need to pay. Pay for welfare and schools and all of them, they're, they're, they're over. Yeah, they have, oh, they look at it, remember, it's, it's, we're getting. I'm starting to say, do you know the number to the state for welfare and schools and everything, they could be, yeah, they have to go over one point five, or one point six, and that'd be a short laugh. Uh. Uh. Yeah, especially that I would have made other, you know, every point zero one, that's a place, that's in our conversation, I'm gonna call it that. How much, you remember what that was?
Every point. Over one is sixty thousand.
Alright, so, uh, on ten, there's sixty thousand.
Every point one would be six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if they had this question, uh, three quarters of a hundred, what?
Yes.
Three quarters of a hundred, uh.
Second.
So, uh, that's pretty much.
No, he said, it's, it's.
Exactly. If anybody had, everybody's got.
Basically.
Uh, what, what, one, two, three, something like that? One, two, or three, somewhere around there. I don't. What did you say the number was? Sixty-five, I think.
Sixty, then.
One, four, two, five. I'm supposed to. And we try to keep, uh, not to certify. Even if the president, now that they are more control things, and on the same, now called a controller. And this is very effective, however, over the years, yeah, he said, we love a lot of more places. Uh, oh, we just got a title that is married, kind of, you know. Uh, but yeah, we heard, uh, home support, so, uh, I was going at one point three, but, you know, that's, if you want a hundred percent. Uh, in your visa path. The question is, uh, again, it is, sometimes, we're not mandated, of course, uh, but if you go to one of the passes, it's. Uh, and so, living pretty seriously, uh, or in other words, you have a lot of people complaining. It doesn't mean you can't do after that, and if you have a lot, they took the other half of this town, you took part, part way from your general fund of, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand. Then again, it's only seven hundred thousand, it's a bottom line. Before, it wasn't that round off, it wasn't that bad. But now, you actually say, oh, well, this wasn't seven hundred fifty, but when you get that down, and it's all, you need to, oh, seven hundred thousand, hey, you got fifty thousand to spare that. Could have gotten really a lot of money where they could, obviously, you have a mountain. It's fun, while I was consulting the auditorium for playing, I said, you know, based on the daily game, you're not playing around. Uh, we could easily say four million dollars. And people laughed, he says, yeah, well, one four wing control, this is four wing, and that's basically their bar tab, so they won't need much. Uh, they're, they're still making a billion. Uh, was four million. So I said, they, you know, I need to, that, you know, maybe if I, if I found a parent, I don't know, we're not, we're not. We're not living loud, we're working hard anymore.
Darren, do you have Scott County as client? Do you have Scott County as client?
No, uh, um. They probably got the, that's all, we got two, that's all, and he said, well, but all of a sudden, really, people are loving, we are converting, so. Uh, I've never been, but, but that count, but then again, I've never been, it was a brag, yeah, the branch count, I didn't tell them, so. Too bad, too bad.
Yeah, well, too bad, that's why I've spoken to Ron Leo and I about EMS, you know, on the spring, the general fund. But we both are like, well, then where are they paying for it from? And I think we're wondering if they did this tax or not, so.
It was in last year, uh, sort of what's called it, and maybe last year this year, and that's why they potentially so much more important.
Is that something that can be found on Gateway or what's, how, what's the best way to find where that revenue is coming from?
Well, the revenue is, it's either that, from, uh, what you're allowed to do with it, uh.
I mean, how, how that kind of specifically paying for their being?
Oh, uh. Be more likely to, uh, possibly aud- auder, uh, when you call up, it'll be. Because the, uh, thing I get in the state to do it on, is easy bucket. Uh, and they had it updated with the EMS yet, they had it updated for the township. Uh, a lot less looking coming than in, uh, February, March next year.
The pay force lagging behind the state law.
So the best resource is basically about the local, local.
I'm sure you're asking, how are you doing next year?
I think it'd be helpful to know the surrounding counties, I think.
Uh, what I'd like to encourage is, uh, the different conferences, all of your trade unions, uh, you're all the time to do. Uh, they still talk about, uh, that's the thing I love about back on the county then. Uh, I didn't, I was starting to listen to all the stories, but that doesn't work, and then I tell, okay, I'll do that. So I thought, boy, it was a disaster. Or, oh, wait, that didn't work because you don't have this guy, it didn't work the way it was. And that's why, that's the example, that's where, like I said, uh, wealth kind of get implemented, so it's still, one of the council members still had, uh, this album that, uh, was going to really fund it. And they said, look, they don't do something, the foundation from the program, we're spending their money. This guy intended to, uh, at the time he died, loved it, so they were hurting a lot of interest on the investment. But we've beaten away all the interest and now we're dying in the principal, so four by eight. But we gotta look now, we can't keep looking at one year ahead. We've gotta look at through the five years ahead, which is not something that government in general ever does.
Are there any counties that are, um, putting funds into endowments and using that for maintenance payments, or is that something that typically does?
Uh, that, well, I think that's not one, that may be the problem.
That would be very future thinking.
How about the endowment?
Well, I think the foundation, like a local foundation, they put like a large amount into, say, I don't know, say a million dollars into a park. And then they pull out the, the excess gain, all that can be used for the maintenance. So it's initial large investment that you're just pulling off of the interest to me.
Okay, now I would say the concept is wealth kind of, the hospital, this guy, on that, put it into, uh, foundation, the general fund, that it could easily, what it needs is easy interest, and that's it. But if, if council member hears about the, our county didn't like nothing we're gonna see. And they never even paid that, you know, immediately. They gotta, they said, they gotta say, well, old times see, why even bring it down? Fresh and all that. And, uh, some people, my, uh, mother in law, with us, he said, here are the news. He said, this is what my mother used to telephone about. And, uh, we run ahead here, so, uh, yeah, it's all the world now. I think, I don't, I mean, you're trying to, I'm just trying to listen to the county, find out what does, does work.
Yeah, we're strapped with a very tight budget, even with very minimal increases in funding. A lot for us to go through, and really try to take a hard look at how do we not continue to operate in the deficit. So that was a very challenging, but that means that I don't know if the sentiment is, you know, with the council to raise the taxes. Even for, you know, the exact, I don't know how much of an appetite there is on the council to do that. Are there other strategies, you know, now that you can, now that you've taken a look at our county, you've worked with those for so long, are there other strategies? Or pieces of advice that we should look at when it comes to budgeting and picking stewards of fund?
No, I didn't do it, again, for all the counties, uh, you know, um, you're, you're a bit on a tight budget, you know. Uh, a lot of counties that I've worked with are at one point two, four point eight, three, three two. Uh, I, I just tell them, look, it went to credit two years ago, there were, uh, one person started lowering it, and at the same time, so it's hundred ten. But hundred ten is if the day cash came in, they were cashed out, they were raising five, ten. Um. Every time you turn around, say you have something to make your life, something miserable. Next year, uh, the bottom line is the county, uh, is gonna lose, uh, government, or is it counted the whole? It needs to go to the million dollars, or, uh, front of the one, a million dollars that, uh, what time this thing on. Uh, like, um, you have to put up, and supplementations, uh, went up temporarily. Uh. And therefore your rates are going to go higher, therefore, uh, it's, they don't hear, you already did tax. Uh, basically, your census is going up, uh, they're gonna detect, you know, voting, it's rising to go higher because, uh, again, we pay. I think that, uh, you should have forty-five thousand dollar deduction, same deduction. And again, only half of them have mortgages, so those, one half has got three thousand dollars deduction. Well, the other half didn't get it, three thousand dollar deduction, but now they do, next year it's forty-eight thousand. Again, the average from the state is forty-eight percent of people home on, not working, less than half, half of them working it, but now everyone's starting to get three thousand dollars deduction, it's had a deduction. And the legislation kept, increased by, half homeowners, not all tenants, homeowners, and that's why they included thirty-five percent up to forty percent on the supplement. So you got a, uh, forty-eight thousand, a fifty-two thousand, uh, which is, uh, fifty thousand times forty percent, so thirty-five percent. And now, again, the post said is just now even lower and lower of what taxes that can climb on. And one of the greatest part is, well, it's only for one year, it goes to thirty-five, or then the next year goes back to thirty-five and a half. And then the next year, I mean, that goes back to thirty-five percent. I said, yeah, but we're in an eighteen month, two year, uh, cycle of sales. Our sales are going up, so there's something with, for next year, for the next two years, but that's just putting up for those people. By the time we're here, now the sales are back down because coming year, these, uh, mortgage rates are, uh, basically seven point eight nine. And they're just paying by the next twelve months, they're gonna be nine or, uh, ten percent mortgage rate. So home, home sales are gonna keep going down, and, uh, people will be selling because they need the money, because there's a downside at that point, or move away. So again, the census is gonna go back down, and deductions are gonna go back down. So we're in a, friend of, the, the next four years, my thing, uh, you're gonna be the same boat for the next four years. There's no way to generate more revenue because they took away the little bit that the home values enjoy. Uh, farmers are satisfied in a kind of way, it's fine, dude, all that, so, and that's, you know, you know, that's. Boy, every time they thought they hit a light and lowered it, the thousands of people, they couldn't go back, farmers are going up. Uh, frustration there. Uh, businesses, they're going out of states, a lot of families not, not getting what business is. Uh, but I think that it's a crazy business, right here, because there's a lot of persons that are making their last, uh, safety further. You know, they're just, my brother lives in Seattle, or outside of Seattle, Washington. And, uh, he did, he did amazing how much is not on the news of, of all things, or non-employment. And, uh, where they're shocked that they talked about it in the test. So. Again, I, I. You're asking, so are all the others, one, one fight down, how are you, so my first story is only thirteen. Um, I'm not, I'm not hearing any new messages everywhere. And everything that, uh, I talked to Fred Benner about, he told me, or emailed me, you have a few minutes, I want to brainstorm with my people. It's yours too, you have a lot, I've been ready for the same old signal down here. So I thought that's pretty good, so, um. And he said, everything I come up with is about, uh, legislation, I feel, uh. I just, yeah, the listings are long. And, and, and maybe in a certain way, something funny, so, anyways, I had some support. Um, I, I probably, but sometimes, yeah, I didn't have any. Uh, it's, you know, uh, and taxes, there's only two things you can count. And so, yeah, unfortunately, that's what we're gonna look for. I'm just trying to look at what you have and how can you rearrange what you have. Well, we rearranged everything, and I think we pretty much done everything, we're breaking up for the years that have been out there. Uh, again, you know, it's, it's, it's the other thing, we're not fully funded, uh, whatever the service is, within it. So to me, you can't step a little bit in at point, uh, one, three, what's it, maybe, uh, point, uh, three, or one, four, or, yeah. They carry the package, it's obviously, it's a different, it's starting to fund anything, you know, it's a little way to do it. Uh, they don't look at that. That's all, that's, that's, uh. Well, before this would even be considered, it would, it would one level to do. I don't think anybody on the council or, or my, your progress and running, that would wanna do this. But, you know, when the state forces will do the new thing, what are you supposed to do? We can't break on like, whatever government. But could you give us an answer, maybe at some future point, the next few days? Get Michelle and tell us what, if we just raised it half a month instead of going crazy, like, say, stick your head up the bar.
Over sixty thousand dollars, that's point per point for one. We have got eighty dollars in the state, and the way Fred said, probably late this year, again, uh, this is an hour ago, or you would have messes. But when they're talking, we're lucky, I think, it's.
Um, so, wait?
Yeah. I did, yeah. Um, wait, wait, I'm trying to think of that, did you?
I think the biggest, there's a lot of income tax, but.
Yeah.
For every time you add away, it lowers, it's how I kind of follow the policy. And it's, first question is, consumers, uh, of what's next to get this, to, if we add an EMS and a bedrock, these little pieces of the policy.
No, no, well, and you pull away from something, yeah. Uh, but this day, if you raise, you raise from point two, all the others, nobody's in the amount. The only time it changed is that they said that the income or account was shrinking due to the other, uh, budgets, three. But at this point, I'm not aware of, uh, we, we, we're, who's going?
Last year, this year, and it's in terms of, it's, it's.
I know it's been a while, it's been, uh, fun now. Well, not likely that is, the income tax went generally. And for mine, from year to year, you're total income tax, regardless of the budget, total income tax. There's either flat line or April, of what it kind of brings in the income. But public safety, I agree with you, yeah, I agree about that. Because there were, I said, more ways it continues on the hand, based on the country you're in. Because he sent me a, uh, present, and he said, I need you to look at that. And I said, yeah, this is it, I, this is someone who are counting that don't even have a public safety, what, what do you? What I did was look at the data, and I just say, man, some of that doesn't work in the county. And on my first, you can have a seat at that public thing. So I, I cheated looking at the map, and it was one thing, it was the worst, yeah. And when he gave you that spreadsheet, I thought, wow, well, what some kind of population, or budgets, or, let me, there was all this crazy math. Over all the decades, we make public, when they have to, uh, now, they didn't really value the time they extended. So that when someone called up and, and the auditor calls over, Fred, well, what's it, I can't read the map for work, and, and, you know, I made a big account. And they called them, the whole, he does this, that, they all crazy in Manhattan. Then there's just so many people, they didn't care how they were performing. Uh, then they mess up, they copy, they, or one guy, or the other, they're like, that's something, I don't know, that's why you're done. So the trend is now that every map is said. But like I said, the easy way, and if you look at total income tax, right, like, a little money that has always been raised for, for the last five years. So, see, it went down because, you know, it changed the matter of how we got to the year, so it's before I was sure about it, without. But maybe your public safety went up because, again, it had, it had, you were on the, and the sheriffs did because that's the sheriff that ran for that day. So it's still that, that's fine. It's, uh, I deal with the, some kind of friends, and they said, they didn't balance on the maintenance, and, um, but they get on the rebound, but not on the other. And it all free, there's a company that got on all free. What, the fifth? I said, well, if you post one of that one, then the, yeah, mixed up. And then you have to, the more profit they add, a lot of the pay bill, the, the, that's, well. Isn't that, I said, it's worth that.
So perhaps not exactly, yes, no answer, um, like, it still could have been.
It unlikely will increase during the company, ready to be back, but I think it's point three, definitely, that's eighty thousand dollars. Uh, the other one shouldn't change that.
One zero three.
Uh, I'm sorry, yeah. One zero three, that's it.
The three thousand.
I'm sorry. Uh, point zero three nine sixty thousand. Now, the question is, uh, it's certainly that, uh, uh, that's maybe one. I can, if you copy again, what they're saying, estimated each, uh, 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 chair seller, that a lot of the capital, you know, the rest of it. And we'll see if it's sixty thousand, or fifty-nine thousand, or sixty-three thousand.
You said within the ballpark of sixty thousand, for some reason.
The last time I had a hundred and sixty thousand, uh, in the address.
Well, you said, well, you told me that one bit was the message, you didn't say it was the fact.
Right, right, you live in the, you're all.
I just wanted to clarify that with everybody here, that you were about to say sixty thousand, but you didn't tell, you told me that. Your best, a good guess.
Well, the numbers, honestly, from, so far, from what everyone had in town, you know, very, it's, it's, it should be going up. Um, people are backward, people are paying their wages, and you're pulling, you're pulling out.
I feel like we're really just one of them. I mean, it's been, it's not very much, and I'll say, no, but.
Stay, black line. Uh, actually, I'll take that as a encouragement, that is a, uh, it would, lots of evidence, words that it's definitely.
Well, the goal, the goal here, before we discuss the fifty-four, bring it up, if I'm, 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 be, in order to find out how much it would cost the average citizen in this county.
I mean, that is, the salary is supposed to, say, it's point zero three of a cent. Uh, and they, uh, well, that relationship was about fifty thousand. Uh, so that's gross wages, um, and that's, they, they, they print out, puts thirty thousand, point zero. Zero, zero, zero. There's a percent, twenty-five, twenty-three percent. Uh, thirty thousand, it's a point three.
There's a salary.
Thirty thousand, three thousand. Eighty dollars?
Ninety bucks.
Ninety bucks. Again, you gotta clarify with us, but that's, uh, here. Uh, or bad, uh, one person working in the county, ninety dollars, no, that's, that is, that is only number after, to speed up, so. But ninety dollars anymore, I know, uh, before my mother was there, and everything was crazy, my wife and I were lucky, every bit of hundred bucks was gross. And, and pretty weak, and two hundred and ten dollars. Uh, it, uh, it's not increased that much, it's, it's, again, by, uh, it's about three. With, thirty dollars for, for you, for a person. In today's economy, I, I, I would say that's it.
Well, that doesn't help everyone.
Yeah, correct. If you're on a, in a, uh, thousand profits, you're, you're, you're eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah.
It would be worth the dream.
Good question, uh, yeah. Thank you. I, I wish I could, I'm sorry. But at the time, we were just not kind of, I'm sorry.
I think we do, we can, I mean, we just went through the, but there was a fine tip on this year, because, yeah, the department has been very, uh. Going out of their way to make sure their kind of education, or, and even a continued fund, and there's a, you know, I think that. Works really hard to try to be good stewards of the funds, and I don't think there's that tax to raise taxes, especially when people are giving away down right now.
I guess last thing I would give you with, based on, again, the variety of, that I work with. Uh, it's very hard for you to carry yourself, if any, having a long, long, uh, work.
Right.
Because they still have a lot of money, which they hope, or want to be paid back, or, uh, hold their breath, know that they, that they haven't done it. If they're sold a business, they'll go away last year. What do you mean, go with? Uh, they, they lottery money, those, that, those guys lottery money, I mean, get lottery money. And then they have to get a percentage of the lottery money, not near what, uh, uh.
Yeah, like.
There's, there's, when they tell me how much they were bringing in lottery money, uh, Jackson, that.
You're not talking about casino money, you're talking about lottery money?
Yeah, how they, uh, lottery money, um, I don't understand it, but, but, uh, other counties, uh.
Oh, we get some, there, casino.
Casino money, alright.
Okay, I mean, we.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Riverboat, okay, we, yeah, we do have an enforcement, now, Harris County County is Riverboat, we sell, we have an enforcement.
Purple, they don't actually work it. It's, it's, definitely.
You're, it's kind of, bro.
You can't compare yourself to those families down there, they get so much money from everywhere, and you think, very, uh, uh. Uh, so, again, like you said, Scott, um, uh, Jackson, who's above you here.
It's, it's a little challenging, because Jackson has more of an economic ambition, with more, and a lot of industrial, so there.
Okay, that where I'm going, was, that, he, somebody, uh, he can't, he can find a town, like, uh, where you sort of, that town, you split. Have it self-side, like, they can buy whatever, to Wayne County, Richmond, Indiana, I'm sorry, uh, there, I said. You know, Indiana, the, a lot of, there's, 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 there's. There's nothing that won't.
And Scott, Jackson, Lawrence, Orange, or Texas, you know, we know, but we can still talk about a lot of this.
Uh, I knew it was orange, and that was, yeah, there. He definitely, I'm saying, he's out there, but he, that's fair, uh.
I'd like to say to you that.
What's the consolation? Uh, how much money is generated by, by the people that live there, uh, you don't, I mean, you only get one thing, you don't get everything. Uh, uh, again, I mean, there's about Oregon County, they got all sorts of shopping there, so you can't really compare that to any of the other counties around, they have, they get, there's, there. Uh, Orange would be more like, to your kids, when you have their Orange County, but, uh, Lawrence, definitely. Um, and, and, uh, Jackson, like you said, I probably screwed it, a lot of eating and, 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 um, I mean, it's just a matter of, 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 more, um. I don't know where, that was gold public, you know, you go and find out something about a county, it could be a personal market, but they give them that, they give them the money.
And we get calls from other council members and other communities, too, like, trying to ask us about information about salaries, or, you know, how we're getting, so, I think there's. I think also, we're more open to that, how we, that.
What, that county that gives their employees a raise this year, and they lost, uh, thirty percent of their employees last year, so. And here, you had, well, it's time to market, how can we justify every, that's, we got a month, like, for, uh, income tax, right? Ten, no, I'm, again.
It's, I mean, I, I have, you have raised, it was like, eight or nine years.
I said, you know, just. Okay.
One thing I would want to bring up is that, well, part of our conversation was, on the average, and we talked about how hard it was averaging. You took a certain, the, the top part, and then there were the top five to ten. Eighty one, five, six, eight counties, and you said, we will run about fifty, or so, fifty five, and there was a great ranking, the counties were connected.
Uh, that was not looking at any of them.
Not that, not that, we have, we have a conversation, and I, I wasn't able to thank those until I got to my desk.
Okay, but I, I, I sort of, by the factory, if I told you you're, you're fifty, you know, then you're just, uh. What, was that fifty of the lowest, or the highest?
You said between fifty and fifty five.
I remember that, I didn't, you were talking before the town.
Yeah, there was a, that, that, yes.
So, again, I remember, I remember, yeah, I was like, you're, you're fifty, number fifty, I mean, you're, it was down there, we started by the rate, then automatically, you know, you told me that, yes. So, that's why you, you, forty six, forty seven, you know, somewhere in that area, in the, in the middle of the road, that you said.
I do appreciate the conversation we had, was one thing, I know I kept it from yourself, and I know somebody saying that was, you needed to eat or something.
Eighty nine, I, I started, started starting to, uh, this one.
Have any other questions for Darren? Michelle?
Thank you, Darren.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time, and it's always a very in-depth, and enjoyable conversation when you're here, so thank you for helping us also, kind of. Figure out the lay of the land, very, very.
It's larger than.
And it's, yeah, we really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, by way of that.
Oh, wonderful. Alright, good. Thank you, Darren. Anything else for the go to the border? I don't want that, I'm just, I'm just, back in my present, I'll trigger these great things.